Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. This is our special organizational meeting. It's Tuesday, April 18, 2017, at 5:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. First of all, congratulations to Darlene and Jeannie for winning reelection in item three. Welcome, Jenna, to the Village Board.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Congratulations, Steve, for winning reelection.
I was gonna omit that. Does anyone want the oath of office actually administered? Nope, okay. So then I will request roll call, please.
Grenier?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Budrow?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Brett Hauer?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Thank you. Item six, confirmation of appointments, item A. These are just announced, they're not voted on. Finance, building and facilities, Jerry Bollig will chair that with Jeff Budrow and Jenna Jacobson. Personnel and public safety will be chaired by Jeannie Carpenter with Doug Brett Hauer and Jenna Jacobson. Public Works Utilities chaired by Doug Brett Hauer, joining him with Doug, Jeff Budrow and Jerry Bollig. Planning Commission, Jeannie Carpenter will be our Village Board rep. Library Board, Jeannie will also be our rep on the Library Board through 2020. Community Development Authority, those appointments are tabled at this time. Historic Preservation Commission, Doug Brett Hauer is the Village Board rep through 2018. Park Board, Doug Brett Hauer, Village Board rep. Zoning Board of Appeals, Jerry Bollig. Cable TV Committee, Jeff Budrow will be our rep. And then for the Police Board of Commissioners, Fred Schmidt to a five-year term. So I will now open the floor for nominations for Vice President.
I would nominate Jerry Bollig.
Second.
Thank you. Any further nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, welcome, Jerry.
Thank you.
So item C, Board Presidents recommend appointments to committees, commissions and boards requiring board approval. And the recommended motion is to approve appointments on agenda items C, 1 through 14, excluding C2 and C3.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, so I'll read through those. For the Planning Commission, three-year term, Greg Schnelli and Mark Severson. And one-year term, Eric Smithback, alternate member, and Michael Labino, student member. Items two and three, we will not be doing tonight. Item four, approving reappointment to Historic Preservation for three-year term, Arlen Kai and John Beano. And one-year term vacant as the alternate member and student member. And then ad hoc member from Safe Build Incorporated is Ben Cook. Reappointments to Park Board, three-year term, Dave Jamison, Rich Stromenger, who is Rotary rep. And to be arranged yet is a School Board rep, and then Judy Knudsen, the Chamber rep. One-year term, Mark Miller, alternate member. Student reps are Julie Moore and Eva Scythe. Zoning Board of Appeals, two-year term, John Doniger, Dennis Tascala and Douglas Tucker. Reappointments to Board Review, one-year term, Jerry Bollig, Village Board, Jenna Jacobson, Village Board, Darlene Grenier, Village Board, and Jeannie Carpenter, Village Board, and Peggy Hague, Village Clerk. Cable TV Committee, one-year term, Andy Wyland, School rep, Kermit Traska, John Bonseville, Tom Kirchthorfer, Judy Knudsen, Chamber rep, and Paul Zwickler, Program Coordinator. Reprovisionment to the Fire MS District Commission, one-year term, Darlene Grenier and Jeff Budrow. Board Action for the Fire MS, one-year term, Mark Severson and Pamela Hines. And then item 11, Reprovisionment to Oregon Council on Aging, one-year term, Darlene Grenier. Reprovisionment to the Village School District Cooperation Committee, one-year term, Darlene Grenier and Mike Grace. And appointment, reappointment to Oak Hill Advisor Committee and Oak Hill Master Plan Committee, one-year term, Chief Brian Uhl. And then one-year term, one-year reappointments. Village Attorney, Matt Dregney, Holly Wilson, Richard Eady from Stafford Rosenbaum. Prosecution Attorney, Tim Speersneider, Cemetery Superintendent and Sexton, Jeff Rau. Forester and Weed Commissioner, Jeff Rau. Building Inspector, Ben Cook, Safe Build Incorporated. Zoning Administrator, Ben Cook, Safe Build Incorporated. And Zoning Administrator, alternate, Jeff Rau. Any questions or discussion on those? It's way of the motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, designation of official newspaper, legal posting areas and financial institutions, depositories. Board Action, approving Oregon Observer as a Village's official newspaper. Board Action, designate legal posting areas as Village Hall, Library and Post Office. And Board Action, adopting Resolution Number 17 days 15, designation of financial institutions and depositories and authorized account signers. So we can do those all at once?
I think I would do like, I think I'd do them individually.
Okay.
If you would, please.
I thought that after I got done reading them.
You did a good job.
Okay. So item A, need a motion to approve the Observer as our official newspaper?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, legal posting areas, Village Hall, Library and Post Office?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, Board Action, adopting Resolution Number 17 days 15, designation of financial institutions and depositories and authorized account signers.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, discuss some possible action regarding identity theft prevention program for 2017.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So may want to refresh our memory what that's for, since we do it once a year.
Teach us how to do identity thefts.
This is back, I'm gonna read you something back from 2009, this staff report. We felt somebody was gonna ask a question about this tonight, so we went back and looked at it. This is a Federal Trade Commission regulation that requires our utility to develop and implement a written identity theft prevention program. It's a requirement, and others look for it every year, too.
And you all signed this, I'm assuming you all read it, thank you. So are there any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, public appearances. Jason will not be able to be here.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, something came up, so.
Okay.
He asked me to sort of do a overview, and Mike, I may ask you to help me, did it to TIC expansion? So there's a map in your pack, I'll let you get to it, and I'll... If everybody had it, let me see here, see Steve's at it. So basically, Jason built the original building, and then he came back in 2013 and built his first addition. And he has been meeting with the Village staff and is proposing to do a third, a second edition, which actually would be bigger than his two buildings right now. And because of where the property is located, we're having, or he's having to work with the DNR and someone from Matt's firm, as I mentioned, on the agenda, Paul Kent, who specializes in water issues, has been helping Jason get through the process with the DNR. And as we mentioned last night, this property we're proposing to include in TIFF5. Jason will be asking the Village for TIFF assistance to do his second expansion, and then we'll obviously be having increment that would be coming from the project. And at this point, we don't really have any hard numbers. I know he's had some meetings with the DNR, and they haven't told him no, so that's a good sign. And so he's trying to, he's working ahead, he wants to actually try to do the expansion yet this year, or at least start on it. And so we've been meeting with them, and we just wanted to, you know, kind of keep the, or get the board in the loop on it, because at some point, we'll be talking to the board about a possible TIFF grant for the project.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? Okay. That takes us to item...
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't think any questions for Mike about it, but you know, that's fine.
Kind of sneaked right up there on me. So we'll go to the downtown dumpster license agreement. Item one, review of information from Dan Donahue and a note that we appreciate the work that Dan has done, and we do, Dan, thank you.
No problem.
And Matt just sent me a text, he's stuck in traffic on Park Street, but he will be here. I don't think, Dan, that Matt's had a chance to prepare a sample agreement, but he, he has your materials, so.
Yeah, if you want to wait to talk about it until he gets here, I'm fine with it.
Oh, yeah, maybe you want to do that, Steve?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait, okay. Because I can do the next one if you want while we're waiting here.
Okay. So item nine is Village Attorney and Village Administrator Report. Item A, discuss some possible action. Whoops, and here he comes.
That's the fastest trip from Park Street to here ever.
See, Matt heard we were talking about dumpsters, and he fought through the traffic to get here, right?
I'm just in time for that.
Right in time for dumpsters, yeah.
You want to sit down, do that right now, or should we do the next item and come back to it?
Why don't you come back to it?
Okay.
Let me get myself oriented here.
So we'll do 9A, Mike said he could take care of that. And that's discussion, possible action regarding possible lease with BMO Harris Bank for Jefferson Crossings.
Can just grab this.
Construction workers' parking spaces, recommend a motion, provide direction in response to questions from BMO Harris regarding leasing of parking spaces to the Village.
So on the backside of the, or on the second page of the email, they were asking us some questions, and I didn't feel comfortable answering these without, well, first I want to make sure the board knows that I'm working on this. I don't think you knew that.
Yeah.
And we started trying to identify some parking for the construction workers, and actually, I think it was Matt and Jeff that came up with this idea. And actually, I appreciate Jerry Thiel giving me a, and Bonnie Thiel giving me a contact with the bank, and so that started the process. And the board should know that at some point, we're gonna be asking the bank for an easement to put the decorative lighting up on the north side of Jefferson Street. So we're gonna be doing some dealings with the bank in the future. But at this point, we're thinking of leasing some parking spaces that we would have the construction workers parking during the Jefferson Crossing project. They'd be conveniently across the street from the project. And so, I mean, if you look at the questions they're at, who will the agreement be with? Obviously, the Village, the village, the agreement would be. Will a parking fee be available? And at this point, I know I haven't talked to Matt about it, but I think we would just ask them, you know, what would they propose? What type of parking arrangement or fee would they, you know, be expecting for the Village to pay, you know, per space? They're saying, or asking, with their legal fees to draft the agreement, will they be reimbursed? And I guess if we really want the parking spaces, it's coming from the bank, you know? And then what will be the term of the agreement? I would at least want to do at least 18 months. There, you know, Jefferson Crossing wants to be open by next June or July, but to be safe, I'd go out at least 18 months, just to be safe.
Can we back up a little bit?
Sure.
Can you tell me what conversations that you, what conversations have you had with Spanree that led you to this point, to reach out to BMO?
When they were here and they were talking about the project, they were talking about having 40 or 50 construction workers on site. And we were like, where are all those workers gonna park? So we started trying to identify parking spaces, and I was talking to Jeff and Matt, we thought, well, let's reach out to the bank. And we're working on some other possible sites, but we're gonna have to have some place for all these workers to park.
Have you talked about, have you talked to Spanree about putting this back to them? You've identified this opportunity, but it seems as if Spanree should be paying for their construction workers to park, not the Village.
Every dollar we add to their project cost, though, just factors back into their gap analysis, which is being addressed through TIFF funding. So it's kind of like asking them to pay for it is just asking them to...
Pass through.
Pass the cost back to us. That's the problem.
So, so I don't, I don't know that I follow that logic all the way through, because that would suggest to me that any cost overruns that they would incur would automatically come back to the Village to pay. But I don't feel that that's what would happen.
Yeah, this isn't a cost overrun at this point, though. We haven't, we don't even have, we don't have a signed development agreement yet. So if we say to them, we would like you to add to your list of project costs X dollars. We could certainly do that, I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't. I'm just pointing out that we've negotiated a level of TIFF funding based on their project performer. You know, their projected expenses and sources of dollars. And we've had a gap analysis perform of that. So if we go back to them, and we, I'm not saying we couldn't do that, we don't have a number yet either.
No, no.
So right now, I guess the question is, we could go to them and we could say, we would ask you guys to find a way to solve this problem, negotiate with the bank, try and do that, we could do that. But at this point, we're in communications with the bank. So either, I guess we need to decide, does the Village want to continue to be a, playing a role in trying to resolve that parking issue, including potentially funding spots, or do we want to say, no, that's not something we're gonna do?
Yep, you got it.
That's it.
I was gonna say, this kind of came up during the public forum portion of that presentation that night. And I believe it was Jerry asked a question, you know, have we talked to BMO Harris? And our answer at the time would have been like, no, we hadn't yet. When Mike and I went back that following week, we looked at it, and we looked at their parking arrangement, and it was very clear, there was actually a string of about 25 spaces that didn't really fit, you know, didn't really look like they'd be used too much by their employees or customers. And that's kind of what started that rolling down the line. And the fact of just, like we're saying, 40 or 50 people down in that area, I think it was an effort to try to show the downtown businesses and owners that, you know, we are serious on trying to not cause as much parking grief as, you know, they were afraid that we were gonna cause with that down there. Because we were losing spaces with the construction fencing going up and everything like that. So that's kind of how it fleshed together, I guess.
But if the board wants me to contact, you know, Brett and Brian about it, I'm happy to do that.
I would say the other way you could look at it, Jeff, is that these are municipal parking lots. And so the construction workers could fill up that lot, they could fill up this Triangle Park lot, and they would be under every legal right to do so.
Yeah.
So we're kind of heading off perhaps that problem with this little project, instead of having all of our municipal lots clogged with construction worker vehicles.
Long as it's a return on investment to the taxpayer.
I look at it as a proactive approach versus, oh, now we have this problem, what are we gonna do about it?
And I guess when I looked at it, I compared, again, I don't know what the banks would charge whomever with rent is, but based on what we're giving Jefferson Crossing, this may be a drop in the bucket for what we're giving them in TIFF grants and TIFF assistance.
I think I would like to see staff go through with the discussions with the bank and see what's available and see what they'd want on charge before we make a decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I would, yeah.
So would we make Spanree carry any liability insurance that BMO requires? Or would the Village then also carry that if they're the lease holder?
If we're doing the lease, we'd have to provide the insurance.
It's all, this is all negotiable, obviously. I mean, we, Mike has reached out to BMO, they've said, we're willing to, we're willing to explore this, but we need to talk about price, insurance, paying our attorney's fees. So I think that kind of the first issue for this board is, do you want the Village to carry forward with this discussion, with them to see if we can reach an agreement where the Village is doing this? And bring it back to you and tell you, this is where we are? Or do you want to say, well, we don't really think this is our place, we think, we don't, we're not gonna do that. Spanree can do it if they want. Or you could say, Spanree, you have to do it. You have to solve this parking problem, we're not gonna sign a development agreement with you. We expect you to find X number of spaces somewhere for your construction workers and deliver them and pay for them. And if you don't do that, we're not signing an agreement. I mean, these are all, these are all options, so.
So what option do we want?
Well, I think to Jerry's point, it's good to pursue this, it's in everybody's best interest. I think to Jeannie's point, there's nothing wrong with being proactive instead of reactive. But I think to Jenna's point, and I think maybe to my point, too, Spanree should be involved in this conversation before we are. I mean, here's this possibility, here's this opportunity, what do you think? What would you recommend? What would you propose? And if Spanree says, oh, I think that sounds like a great opportunity, then I think we should go ahead and pursue it. I just, for some reason in my gut, don't like spending taxpayer dollars this way and don't like opening the Village up to liability this way. But in my head, I, it makes sense to me what you're saying, it's kind of a fast track to the end point. It just seems like we're skipping a lot of steps.
I think, Jeff, all we're doing is gathering information right now.
We've done, well...
You know, I mean...
Yeah, nothing, there's been nothing committed here.
No, nothing committed.
I just reached out to them, and at first, as you seen in the email, they were only gonna give us four because of their meetings, and I responded, and I thought that we would be able to work around their meetings over there. We would just not, people wouldn't park in the lot that one day or two.
So just, not to get too deep into the weeds, but in terms of there's no harm, that's your time as the Village Administrator, that's been dedicated to reaching out and communicating and negotiating. And I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but I think maybe that speaks a little bit to what's bothering me about this, is that, to me, that seems like the developer's job. Unless you've somehow gotten together beforehand and said, I'll take this on, and the developer said, sounds like a good idea.
Well, I think we had this thought that Jeannie had, that we, I mean, I believe, and maybe not, no one's gonna believe this. I think we could not take these parking spaces, and yes, the construction workers would push some of the people out of this lot and over there, but there's enough parking in the downtown, but people would be parking some blocks away for a time period. And there's something to be said that the construction workers would be right across the street from the site, so they can go, you know, get things out of their trucks and cars and things like that. But if the majority of the board wants us to first see if the developers willing to take this on, that's fine with me, too. I have no problem doing that.
I guess what I'd like to see is have Mike contact the developers, let them know we're working on this, gathering information. And once we have information, we'll talk with them about how we want to go forward together to make this work, or if we want them to do it. I don't know if that gets to your point or not, Jeff, but that'll bring them into it. We'll just, we will have gathered the information, which I think is a good thing for us to do. That we get the information and talk with them about how should we proceed on this. And Matt, if I understood correctly, if we would ask them to pay all that cost, they would just add that to their TIFF request, right?
Well, who knows? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, they might, it's only unpredictable.
Yeah. Okay. So you'll need to come to Mike, please, Jerry.
Hi, Jerry Thiel. I did have a conversation with Brian in regards to parking, and I suggested he contact the church on Washington Street. And from what he told me he was going to do that, there's about 40 parking stalls that are empty during the week, and which, again, I think they're gonna have more than, you know, 20, 25 employee or work vehicles at the site. So, and I was told it was gonna be more like 50. So if there's 25 at BMO, that's still not gonna be enough. And so, you know, maybe in conjunction with BMO, perhaps the church on Washington or Elm Street parking lot could help accommodate with a contribution to the church, you know?
Okay, so that could be part of our contact, that we understand they're looking at the church property, and let's get our information and talk about how to proceed. Does that sound doable?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
Could I just briefly, though, where we are in terms of discussions with the bank is, so based on the discussion tonight, what we'd need to say to the bank is, who will the agreement be with? We'd, I guess we'd say, we're not sure, might be with the Village, might be with the developer. Will a parking fee be available? I think the answer is yes, as long as it's reasonable. We don't know what that is.
Or we could just say no.
Or we could say no, could say no.
See where that goes.
Yep.
Just saying.
Legal fees to draft the agreement, at this point, we don't have any authority to offer that.
Yeah.
Term of the agreement, we're thinking 18, I think we probably need about 18 months.
Yeah.
We understand they would want insurance, that has to be determined down the road in terms, we don't know who's gonna... So I guess my point is, I don't think we're in a position to go back to the bank to get any more information. They, other than we could say to them, well, we're willing to talk about these things, but you tell us how much you want for a fee. You tell us what your insurance requirements are. Tell us what you estimate, you know, we could go back to them with that. I think that's kind of where we are. We have to go back to the bank and say, you tell us kind of what you want on these things.
And at the risk of repeating myself as opposed to refining what I'm trying to say, even your input is billable hours. So we've got your billable hours working on this project, we've got Mike's salary working on this project, plus then we've got the possibility for rent, and then we've got the liability insurance. There's a lot of soft costs that we're gonna carry here that the developer wouldn't necessarily, if they were doing this work instead of us. And so even going back and getting more information is still more billable hours to the Village Attorney to make sure that the information is vetted.
So I will, actually, we were gonna, we're gonna talk to him about the church property as well. Thank you, Jerry. So what I'll do is I'll contact Brett and Brian, that's the gentleman from Spanree, and say, if I'm speaking correctly here, the board wants you to consider doing this with the bank, and then ask them to reach out to the church as well. Because actually, at some point, I think Jeff will support this, they're gonna have almost 50 workers down here. Not all the time, but at certain point in the project, it's gonna be crowded down here with, so.
Well, there's other options, though. There's the parking off of Oak Street where they could bus in, or they could pile, they could do a carpool, where they could park and they could pile into one car and drive four down here, five down here. I truly believe there's a freeway, not a freeway as an interstate, but a free non-costway for them to get all their employees to the job site without having to park a severe distance away.
So I have a suggestion. Why don't we say to the developer, we're gonna need an agreement from you that's part of the development agreement, a parking plan for the construction workers that's satisfactory to the Village. You present it to us, and we'll decide if it's okay.
And I thought we were there at the last meeting. I thought that was pretty much what we said to them.
I don't remember that.
Because if we don't do that, then Jeannie makes the point is that you can't, it's public parking, how are you gonna prevent, you're not gonna have the police department trying to enforce that.
No, I agree with Matt 100%. I thought that's where we were, though, at the last meeting, is that we told Brian, you need to come up with a plan before you start to work on the site as to where you're gonna park your vehicles. I agree with you 100%, that should be said. And then if you want to say, hey, we did some preliminary reaching out to BMO Harris, and here's a contact person, and this is, they might be interested, here's the parameters that they're looking to fulfill, and then do a handoff via email.
Right, so what I'm hearing, though, this is the difference here, is that we're tying this now to the agreement.
Yeah.
Right?
Well...
Saying, we, an essential element of this development agreement will be a satisfactory parking plan.
I think, I think we skipped a couple of steps. I think common sense would dictate his, his construction workers need to park and that they need to do so in a way that doesn't encumber the Village inappropriately or unfairly. As a matter of fact, those are the words he said to us, is that he wants to be sure that this is a win-win. He wants to be sure that the Village isn't put out by the number of workers that are gonna be down here. The workers are gonna be using the restaurants. So I think to have a preliminary conversation, just ask him for the plan, I think he'll come with it. I don't think you're gonna have to tie it to the agreement.
Okay. I disagree with that, but I think if you want a plan that's really gonna work, you need a plan that needs to be enforceable, it needs to be part of the agreement. That's my...
Well, that's fair.
No, I think at least a...
Fair that you disagree with it.
Memo of understanding or something, so that in the event that isn't working the way we expect it to work, that we have something to go back to, so. That would be my preference.
Yeah, we've had much better luck with agreements that are enforceable.
Yeah.
We've found a couple of times when they weren't, it came back to bite us.
Yeah.
And I don't have that experience. I mean, literally, I've only been here for three years.
Right.
I don't have that experience.
Yeah.
So...
My guess is if we have one that's not enforceable, you will have that experience.
But I don't need to go through it to believe it has happened, and I can learn from your experience.
Yeah.
Instead of have to...
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to contact Brett or Brian, one of the, or both of them, and say that here's some information I got from the bank. I, I think I've actually sent this to him, I think Brett, thank you for that. And I'm going to say that the board had a discussion at the board meeting, and would like you to present a parking plan. Let's see what they say.
Start there.
Okay. So I'll do.
Okay. Anything else on this topic?
That's it. I'll thank you.
So we'll go back to item B, downtown dumpster agreement. Again, welcome, Dan.
Are you ready yet, Dan?
Uh, I'm, I'm good. And just to the previous point, I was, I spoke to the foreman yesterday for about a half hour at Jefferson Crossing, and he reiterated their plan, that their intent is to never use the public parking lots to have their people parking elsewhere. Don't know if they have a plan for it yet, but that they will not be using the public parking lots, and they're very committed to that, so.
You want me to speak to this?
It.
Or Dan? I mean, I can just tell the board where we are, as, as I understand it. Dan has really done some, some good work here in first reaching an agreement among the Chocolate Caper, Ace's Main Tap, Scott Williams, Holstein Kitchen, Charlie's On Main, and Ziggy's Barbecue. So you guys have an actual agreement that you've negotiated that addresses the, the the service component of that, the actual dumpster service, right? And we are, I am at my, on my end in the process of preparing the agreement between the village and, and those parties. We're not quite done yet. I was, I was out last week and just, we're, we're not quite there yet, but I don't think it'll take us too, too much longer to be ready with the agreement. I was hoping to have it in time for this meeting, but we don't. I was out last week. I think maybe there's just a couple of small things, Dan, we might need to work through with you in terms of the agreement, but I think it'll be fairly straightforward, so.
Yeah, you can definitely call me and talk to everyone in there, just of the opinion, let's just get it done.
Yep.
Everyone's in agreement on the terms and everything, so I'm kind of representing the businesses at this point.
What I really liked that you did in this, Dan, I want to make sure the board notices that, I like that you have every two months, you have a different business monitoring and cleaning the dumpster. That was a great idea.
Yeah, we figured that would be.
Yep.
It was when we had the TV out there and nobody knew what to do.
Yeah.
And the TV disappeared, and nobody knows where it went. So I'm not going to argue with that.
No, it's a really good idea.
Should have like a choreboard with kids.
That's, that's basically what we were into, yeah.
So there's no action, I, I just, I didn't know what was.
Yep.
We will, as soon as Matt sends it to me, we'll send it to Dan to look at. Whenever it's ready to go, we'll, we'll put on an agenda for consideration by the board.
Okay.
How's this been to facilitate, Dan, for you?
It's tricky to get ahold of everyone, so to actually track people down and get in front of them is hard, but once I get in front of them, it's been very easy. Everyone knows we need dumpsters, knows we have to pay for them, never, nobody wants to lose them. Nobody really cares where they are, as long as we have the service. It's just a trick, the trick is getting ahold of people.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate it. We've done item nine, we will go to item nine B. Discussion possible action on resolution number sixteen, seventeen day sixteen. A resolution approving affordable housing initiative funding through TID number two. Recommended motion approve resolution number sixteen, seventeen day sixteen.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
And I just want to take this opportunity to thank Mike for finding this creative opportunity, this creative way for us to generate funding for affordable housing. You know, we were talking a couple of meetings ago about the, the issue of the tax impact of the capital improvement plan, and the fact that the way of the world is things just keep getting more expensive. There's not a lot we can do to keep taxes from going up so that we can invest in the infrastructure that's necessary to make the survivor in community. But what we can do is we can make sure that we equally invest in the facilities that are going to be necessary to take care of those in the low to moderate income bracket, so that they can continue to be part of this community because they're, they're in our fabric, they're, they're part of our family. So this is one more step in that direction, along with the food pantry building out on the west side, to ensure that people in the low to moderate income tax bracket, uh, low to moderate income brackets can continue to be part of the Oregon community. So thank you for that.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. We'll go to item ten.
You'd call it?
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot about that. So the motion to approve resolution number seventeen day sixteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Mike jumped me to read all of ten and eleven, so it's all before us to start with, because.
It, I, that was my suggestion. It's, it's going to be hard not to, not to mean them, I think, if, if you want.
Okay. So bear with me, so the public has this. Mike has suggested, probably discussing items ten and eleven at the same time. And so we'll have a continuing discussion. Mike Slavney on the final civic campus plan. Item A excerpt from Jackie Misha's Houston Van De Waal also presentation of final civic campus plan, the March thirteenth board meeting. Item ten B, overview of Dane County pure library building projects over time and comparative construction cost. Nikki Bush, our library director, will be doing that. Item C, the two thousand seventeen library budget, pages thirty-two and thirty-three. This is the first year of the stepped plan for increasing staffing, subscriptions, audiovisual and books in anticipation of the library being built, and having to meet Dane County library standards. Item D, does the library board want to hold a joint meeting to discuss the library building and process with the village board? Item eleven, continuing discussion with the two thousand eighteen twenty through two thousand twenty-two capital improvement plan and possible board action. Village administrators note, after reflecting on the board's discussion at the special April tenth board meeting, Mike feels the village board should first make a decision on the location and cost of the new library before we attempt to finalize the two thousand eighteen through twenty-two CIP. As Mike mentioned at last week's board meeting, the timing of the building, of building the library and related costs and debt service is greatly impacting the completion and adoption of CIP. So he's recommended the village board request the following information, library board, preferred location of the new building, proposed schedule for design and construction, the library's total square footage needs, total cost of new library, which include the following estimated feasibility study, estimated architectural design fees, estimated building cost, and estimated soft cost including landscaping. What Mike says is not included is a hiring of a construction supervisor who would oversee the project on behalf of the village. That's something he requests the village board to discuss at some point. Also, we know is that village attorney Matt Gregnie wants to have a discussion regarding chapter forty-three, use of library impact fees, and the village board's involvement in building the new library with the village board. So that's all before us right now, and we'll start with Mr. Slavney. Welcome, Mike.
We've prepared a civic campus master plan that we intend to be a compendium of all of the work that the staff and the plan commission and the board have done. It's fresh in our minds right now, but in, into the future, there'll be fewer and fewer of us with worse and worse memories to recall exactly what we did, at least based on my personal experience. And so we wanted to, to get all of that information out. At the same time, we felt that we need to keep options open. We're talking about a number of municipal facilities over an extended period of time, and to come up with a final detailed program of what's going to happen where in what year is, is too rigid of a plan to, to really be practical going forward. And so we identify possibilities and alternatives, but have, have been restrained in terms of providing a, a year-to-year detailed program. And I, I think that's the, the right way to go. We, we lose the benefit of all the alternatives we considered if, if we jump to that level of detail, which my experience also tells us, we need to be more light on our feet as the economy evolves, as the needs and, and standards for these facilities involve, evolve, and as personnel, particularly on the village board over time, evolves. So in that way, it's an unsatisfying document. It, it doesn't provide that crystal clear game plan, but rather, you know, attempts to give the board the ability to make decisions as the time is ripe and make decisions as to what goes where and what order. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the document itself.
And Mike, I forgot, I wanted, Darlene, you had a question that we couldn't answer at the last meeting. Mike, Darlene's question was this, that if we did a two-story building that you're showing in the civic campus plan on the church property, could you expand that building in the future?
Yes, and, and actually, I was looking at your packet, and there's a slide from Jackie's PowerPoint show that I believe didn't copy accurately, maybe because of a margin issue, and I want to correct it because it relates to Darlene's question. So I'm looking at the slide that has a, kind of a gray air photo with a footprint of a potential library building, and there's text to the left that says, potential library, two stories, seventy-five hundred square foot footprint. The one in seventeen thousand five hundred somehow did not appear on this slide. So to be accurately reflecting the space needs projections that were identified in our space needs study and reflect current standards for communities of this size, that would be seventeen thousand five hundred. And we know based on the topography of the site that we have the opportunity for a partially exposed lower level on, on the west end of the building. If we went to a three-story footprint, particularly with that daylighting opportunity that we have along, you know, depending on how grading goes, along a significant portion of the west end and the north and the south, the westerly end of the north and south sides of the building, we could go with about a twelve thousand square foot footprint at three stories. So we have options. We could go with three stories in a vertical format and start at the west and expand east. That would be less expensive than doing the whole building at two stories and then going up. But buildings are built that way all the time. My, my office building, which is built on pylons there on John Nola Drive, is three stories. And we have approved a fourth story for three townhouses on the top floor, and we joke about Brian Van De Waal living up there like Howard Hughes coming down in his bathrobe, but it's pretty creepy, so no one's in a hurry to have that happen, but it's, it's, it's very possible to design the, the structural members of the building, particularly on this good soil site, to carry an added floor on top. So that, that's, that, that's one alternative. The other alternative would be to start at three stories with a smaller footprint and then expand laterally. And that tends to be a less expensive alternative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, discussion for Mike?
So Mike, if I understand your overview, expanding laterally is less expensive than expanding vertically?
Typically.
Really?
Because the, the, the design of the building, you're designing vertical, for the vertical loads at, at a particular level that's not going to change. And, and so there are cost savings involved with, I should say, it's more expensive to design it at two stories to take on a third floor later than it is to go straight away to three floors.
Right, 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 because you have the same rough, and you have the same footprint. I mean, you know, you pour the concrete, you have same size rough. So.
So those lateral expansions tend, tend to be more cost effective.
That's, okay, then I misunderstood you. Okay, that's what I, I agree.
Have the neighbor, neighbors expressed a, a desire if they would prefer a three-story that's smaller or a two-story that's wider?
No, we, we know that they didn't like a four-story proposal. And again, in, in describing this as a three-story, I think it's, you know, to the neighbors, it would appear to be a two-story building, the extra, extra floor is down. Having a, a habitable, usable, lower level rather than a, a typical basement level. So they were very comfortable with a two-story above-ground structure. And so I think the, the three-level option, I'm not going to say three stories, the three-level option, I believe is consistent with what we heard from the neighbors.
How many square feet will three levels give us?
Well, the, our target is to come in at somewhere between thirty-five thousand square feet and thirty-six thousand square feet. Gross.
You have the option of possibly not finishing the top level or leaving that for expansion or whatever.
There, there are options there too. We could, for example, one, one, I think viable possibility is to build the building at build-out need and have that surplus room in the, in the, in the near term be available to house the senior center while that site is under development.
That was the point I was getting at, yeah. What would be the cost for, for square foot for something like that?
It depends on the level of finish that you're looking for. Nikki did a great job of providing recent cost examples, and I, I think there was a hundred percent variation. Some of the, Fitchburg, for example, went with a very high level of finish, and their cost, as I recall, was over four hundred dollars a square foot. And other, other facilities were close to two hundred dollars per square foot. And again, that's where a usable lower level can be helpful in terms of cost, because that lowest level, if it's used, is going to have a lot of weight-bearing capacity. And it's, it's more cost-effective if we can use that lower level. But in, in my experience, these, these decisions like level of finish are often made in response to fundraising success. If, if you find that once-in-a-lifetime donor, you know, which helped out in Fitchburg, then, then a higher level of finish can be provided without necessarily putting that burden on the taxpayers.
Okay. So using a, a figure in between, what would be the cost of something?
Let's, let's take a look at that handout here.
Yeah, so, yeah, Nikki's number is, Nikki, I think you're saying two hundred and forty dollars per square foot, right, a year?
Yes, that number was provided by Deb Hefner at South Central Library System. As a rule of thumb, it doesn't include, as you'll notice, there's an asterisk at the bottom that says, it doesn't include land acquisition, landscaping, you know, inflation, things like that, but in twenty seventeen dollars, she felt that it was a no, a good number to go with a two hundred and forty dollars per square foot. And that could, depending on how in-depth you get, that could include I F F and E.
And, and that total then came to eight point five billion.
And that would be, how many square feet again, Mike?
Thirty-five thousand two hundred. And that, that, that thousand square feet is going to vary depending on how efficient the floor plan can be. You know, we're talking about hallways and, and entry areas. You know, we're talking about hallways and entry areas. The level of precision on that, that kind of square footage below 1,000 square feet is, it would be a mistake to say we want it to be exactly that many square feet.
Any more questions for Mike right now? Okay, so then item 10B is overview of Dean County pure library building projects over time and comparative construction costs. Nikki?
Sure. I put together this document as a way to sort of begin to wrap my mind around how much it might actually run to construct a facility that would meet our needs. And also, I wanted to be looking at local costs, what has been done in this market as opposed to like on the east or west coast or different parts of the country. It varies pretty widely. And there's a lot of information here, everything from the lifespan of the previous library, which I threw in there because I was surprised. Sometimes it feels like, well, we just built this library, the one that we're currently in. We've been there 22 years. But if we look at the lifespan of the previous libraries in the other municipalities, the average was 20 and a half years. So we're really not that far out of the norm there. I include when it was built, municipal population at the time of build, and 2016 municipal population estimates on the far right. So you can see how much growth those areas have experienced over the time. Square footage, number of stories. And then the total at the time of build, I have that for more, I was able to identify that number for more of the facilities than not. And then I used the Bureau of Labor Statistics Inflation Calculator to determine what that would be in $2017. So that doesn't include, you know, for instance, you know, the price of steel and its changes compared to the market, just inflation. So as Mike Slavney said, there's a great deal of range there. But in looking at this, it certainly makes me feel that an estimation of $240 per square foot is by no means extreme or high. If anything, it's on the moderate side.
Are there questions for Nikki on this?
I appreciated the PowerPoint that you included for the Wannakee Library.
Yeah, that was available on their website. Thanks. I shared that with Mike as well, just because it's always interesting to see what other municipalities are experiencing and how they're developing, going through the process. So it gives us an idea of what a potential reasonable timeline might be, as well as, you know, the needs enhancements that I see listed in their PowerPoint are the same kinds of things that we've been discussing. You know, we need more space, people want conference rooms and study rooms. They want a flexible, multipurpose building that can adapt and change with the future so that we're making the most effective use of taxpayer money as possible.
What are your thoughts on the capital campaign? I noticed that there is a big emphasis on that in the PowerPoint as well.
Sure. So I believe they conducted a fundraising feasibility study, which basically a professional in the field of fundraising comes in and assesses the local environment in a number of ways. They do interviews, surveys, et cetera, to identify what they believe the capacity is of a particular population and what the need, how the need compares to that. And then come up with an estimate of how much they think reasonably could be fundraised. Does it mean it's easy to fundraise that? No, it still would be a good deal of work and commitment from those involved. But it's, I think, important to have a realistic number that we're asking the library or, you know, a portion of a subcommittee of the library board or whatever it happens to be to raise this money. We don't want it to be unattainable. So that's, I think, an important piece in that.
So one note, because I've been through a capital campaign that way before. That requires a capital to contract. So that's money that can't be spent on the library because it's being spent on a consultant?
Correct. So that's one reason why not every municipality or building project goes through that. But if a municipality feels that there's a need to supplement with fundraising, at least then you're looking at a doable goal. But it's not the only way to proceed. I do believe a feasibility study is required as part of the 40-year loan through the USDA. So that would be one reason why, if we're considering going that route, that would be one piece in that puzzle to make that happen.
A feasibility study for fundraising is required as part of a loan?
Honestly, when I read the application, I was unclear on what kind of feasibility study because there are a number of different kinds of feasibility studies out there. And that was going to be one of my questions from Mr. Slavney, if he happened to know.
The feasibility study that is required is not a capital fundraising feasibility study. It is a construction implementation feasibility study.
Thank you. And how is the library board engage the towns that will be using this library around us? Like Dunn, Rutland, Town of Brooklyn, Village of Brooklyn, Town of Oregon?
Honestly, I don't believe that there's been any action taken in that because there's been a strong desire to not get ahead of the group on this. The library board's been very sensitive and trying to be not running out ahead and getting into the weeds.
Other questions? Good, thanks for preparing that, Nikki. That's real helpful.
You're welcome.
You've obviously spent a lot of time on this. We appreciate it. It's a big decision going forward, the library board and the village board.
Absolutely. So I figure facts can't hurt.
Yeah. Yeah, facts are great.
One thing I think you can safely do, without getting too far ahead of the board, you know, education is so important to anything being successful at the governmental level. To educate those towns with the information that you've pulled together and just help them become aware of the need will probably save you time in the long run because you won't have to try to catch them up with information. But as far as, you know, I understand as far as like going out and fundraising and saying, "This is the project and this is where it's going to be. We haven't gotten there yet."
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Nikki or for Mike?
The next item is 10C, which addresses Jerry's question about operation and staffing. So that was just a FYI that Nikki met with Lisa and me this year. We've implemented the step plan in the budget, so.
Yeah, I remember that talk in the budget meetings that we had, so, okay.
So one quick question on staffing for the library. Nikki, we haven't really talked about this in a long time. We've talked about one-floor, two floors. But I remember several meetings ago, you said that there's actually a difference in the staffing of a one-floor, two-floor. How does that affect the FTE for the library?
It certainly, lines of sight can affect that. And I've been talking to a lot of different directors about their facilities and their experiences with running them. And there are some things that I believe that can be done that would minimize the need to have as many new bodies added. I think that in the 10-year staffing, I put a 10-year staffing plan together as requested by Mike. And I think that with the step plan, we'll be very close to where we need to be by 2020. At that point, possibly adding more page positions, which are not the highest paid positions. So it would not be as great of a need, but would certainly help implement the work there.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item 10C?
To clarify with just one thing, Nikki. The need for more space is contingent upon more people using the library, more than materials themselves. Is that, would that be fair to say?
I don't, would you ask the question again, please?
The additional increase in space that this library would represent?
Yes.
The increases due more to the projection that more people will be using the library, living in the village and surrounding areas.
Only to a certain degree. Right now, we're well beyond capacity. So we would need to almost double in size to meet what we should have right now. So yes, there's some projection out into the future of population increase, but it's only out to 2030 or 2035?
Well, I guess my question was more about how much of the material that the library acquires is electronic. And so therefore, there's a, perhaps, maybe I'm incorrect in saying so, that there's a decrease in the need for storage space of library materials.
That has not been what we've found to be the case. The use of electronic materials is increasing, but so is the use of print materials. Right now, we have shockingly little compared to other libraries, other of our peer libraries, because we've maxed out the space. And when we're maxing out the space, people aren't able to even see very well what's on the shelf. So then additional space would allow us to make those materials better available to the public. I see only growth in that. And certainly, there could be a change at some point. And it's perhaps not as increasing at the same speed as it might have in the mid-'70s. But people are using the materials and they're using the library also in new and different ways. It's more of a third space where people come together to work, to study, sometimes in groups, sometimes individually.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else on that? So that takes us to D. Does the village board want to hold a joint meeting to discuss new library building and process with the library boards? It's pretty much a given.
You know, I tell you, the one thing I'm going to say again that I said the last meeting is we don't really have a clear memorandum of understanding that explains who's responsible for what. And so I would like to get together with the library board. But I would hope that either on the agenda or before the agenda, we would do that work.
That goes to the last sentence of the agenda.
Yeah.
Mine says adjournment.
Don't get eager, Jeff.
Full sentence, Jeff.
Right above that.
Just fine.
Under item 11, the last sentence, it says that Attorney Dragony wants to have a discussion about chapter 43?
If I could step in here, I think what would also be helpful before the joint meeting or in preparation for the joint meeting, item 11-4. I'd like to hear the library board's thoughts on item 11.
Yeah, I think Mike listed that, so we have that before that meeting.
Yeah, so let me back up here a little bit. So 10D and 11 are sort of related. So what I envisioned was that to, versus having Nikki come here and do the report, you know, this would be requested from the library board. All this information, you give the board as much time as they would need to do it. They would come back at a joint meeting and present this, library board to village board, on what they're looking for in a new library. So then that's all the way we know where they stand. So that should have been resolved. And then in between, while they're working on that, Jeff, we would then be talking to Matt Dragony about your question.
So in my head, I'm already hearing Jeannie tell me, "Jeff, it's because they don't agree with you." But I'm going to say it anyway. We keep asking the village and the library where they would like to have the library. Now, not only have we used the impact fees to pay down the debt, right?
Nope, we haven't.
Okay, we proposed it, we've talked about it. We understand the impact fees go away if they don't pay down the debt. That's a problem. We've contracted with Mike and I've laid out my argument for why you would spend $50,000 and then disagree with somebody's opinion. But Mike's got a clear opinion, he's clearly articulated it and supported it in every possible way. We have entered into borrowing at the last meeting where there will be, it will be difficult for us to untangle the borrowing that we have entered into for the purchase of the Methodist Church property if we don't use it for a municipal building, specifically the library. So now there's three steps that we've taken that have moved us in the direction of putting the library.
The tangle would be as if you tried to sell it for private investment. What Jim said on the phone was that he had a label of something. If you wanted to put the village hall up there or the senior center, or let's say the senior center, you could do that.
I appreciate the clarification. So the point I was trying to make doesn't necessarily counter what you're saying. Just simply that we've limited our options as to what we can do for that. Originally, when we bought the land, we said, "Hey, we're just buying land right now. And if we want, we can flip this land in two years and be out of the game." But at the last meeting, when we decided to borrow for that land, we took that option off the table. We can't just sell that land without having to go through some process now.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And that process will cost money. And we're still talking about where do we want to have the library? And I feel as if these three components continue to move us in this direction to the point where we're almost begging the question. And if I was on the library board that's responsible for citing the library and felt like I had a voice and I wasn't keeping track of the fact that my voice is getting quieter and quieter and quieter, I probably would feel all right. But if I was keeping track of it, I'd be frustrated right now. Why we as a board haven't decided whether or not we're going to agree with Mike Slavney's recommendation is really bothersome to me.
And that's in the middle of number 11, right at the top. Mike says the board should first make a decision on location and cost of the new library. So that's starting to pin that down.
If the village board wants to do that and not, you know, not refer that question to the library board, or the village board can decide all this. But it's just, it sort of gets, again, it gets, can I just say one thing, Matt? It gets complicated, not to pick on chapter 43, but it's chapter 43. That's what gets complicated about this. And Matt has a lot to say about this, but I don't know if you want to say that tonight or if you want to say that in closed session, I, you know.
I tell you what, I know that we could make this decision. But I would feel a whole lot better if we got the input from the library board.
And what if they unanimously say we're dead set against it?
Then we still make a decision, but we have their input.
It doesn't feel good. It feels like you're begging the question, and I wouldn't appreciate that.
I'm not begging the question, I'm just getting input from everyone.
Well, how many meetings have we had where everyone's been invited?
But we haven't heard from the library board. We haven't invited them to give us their input.
But we've had this conversation about other things, too, when it's, you know, Matt's talked about putting things to referendum and be careful because, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I hope, but you can stop me if I am. Because if you put things to referendum and all of a sudden people show up and vote against it, you've got a real dilemma on your hands. Your job as an elected official is to make these kinds of decisions, not in a vacuum, but with input from the community. And we've met on how many Mondays now and invited the community to come and they're not here.
But we've sort of.
Maybe they're not here because it doesn't work for them. Five o'clock is a difficult time for people to get here.
It's a difficult time, yeah.
We've been formally asked the library board to sort of, they have a building committee that they're ready to implement and start working on this. We've asked them informally just to wait and let the village board catch up. So I think that at this point, the village board now is caught up where the library board is, and so.
And I got to thank Mike Grace because this is only on the agenda because he's, like, Mike said, it's time.
Well, we can't, we cannot finish the capital improvement plan based on what I heard at the last, on April 10th. The board has to make a decision on the library.
Yeah, I mean, this is a big, big decision. And I think I, for one, would be most comfortable getting all the input that we can get. And I think this is going to go fast now. I know you're ready to make a decision, Jeff, and that's great. I'm not until I hear from them.
Yeah, I think that's our next step here from the library board. And what do you think of that, Nikki?
I think that the library board would be happy to respond. We can certainly put it on our next agenda.
It's going to be a long meeting. There's a lot of information, a lot of stuff that's being asked for there. But it's stuff we need to go forward.
Absolutely. And it might be that we are not able to get all of the points. Absolutely, and it might be that I, we are not able to get all of the points, you know, with, within, you know, a week or three. However, we might be able to answer some, they, you know, I can pose the questions as part of the agenda, and they may be able to get some of that too sooner than later.
You know, if it takes a couple of months, it's okay. Uh, we don't wanna fast track this. Like Jerry said, it's big decisions, and we wanna be thorough as we go forward. And I think that's, if it takes more than that, that's fine. We don't say have it in our next meeting habit.
No, I realize that.
When you have time to get it done.
But I was also trying to provide some assurance that, you know, we certainly wouldn't dawdle in trying to get that answer.
Make Jeff be sure we're going fast enough, right?
Nikki, when's the next time the library board meets?
Uh, the second Wednesday of May. Um, it is always possible, um, to call a meeting, uh, sooner than that, a special meeting if, uh, needed.
Can we consider, um, possibly having a meeting at a different time or a different location to try and get more input from the community since five o'clock? Is a difficult time for some people to get here, is that?
You mean as far as our meeting, or?
Yeah, or like having any sort of listening session that's outside of the Monday at five? Even if it's at six, you know, just something that's a little bit easier for people who are making that commute to come and share their voice.
And I think when we get to the, uh, item eleven-four and get that back to the library, then I think that will start to engage the public more, won't it? We have some actual cost, I think, and some, uh, where it's gonna go and that type of thing, I think that would create more interest, and we could talk about having, uh, a meeting and inviting the public and having it at six P M.
What we could do is actually, I could, I could put this at the end of an agenda.
Yeah.
And then, it'll be, well, it'll be six o'clock, six thirty, seven o'clock before we get to it anyways, then.
Yeah.
Typically.
Matt, you had some comments?
Just a few things, because, um, there's some things that I worry about that you may not be aware of. And, and, uh, and I, I wanna make sure I, I have a chance to tell you what they are. So, we, I think it's, it's clear that even, even if you're just looking at some of the, the things we've already been talking about, building a library is an extraordinarily complex undertaking, right? But there are some things about the legal framework that apply here that make it even more complicated, and, and I want, and I wanna make some suggestions. So, under Wisconsin law, we have a statute that says that, that the library board, so we have two separate boards, that's what makes this complicated. We have a village board, which has certain powers and authorities as it relates to this project, and we have a library board. And under Wisconsin law, um, I'm just gonna read from the statute. The library board shall have exclusive charge, control, and custody of all lands, buildings, money, or other property devised, bequeathed, given, or granted to, or otherwise acquired or leased by the municipality for library purposes. Okay? So, and I've done some digging to try and find out whether people, what, what people think that really means. And when is it, do we go from, do we find ourselves in a position where the library board could say, that's our property up there? And we're in charge, and we're gonna decide, you know, and I'm not saying that they would do that. But there, there is a point legally where they, they could do that. And, so what I've seen in other situations is, on the front end, in many cases, a, a real lack of understanding of kind of what the library's board's role is, and what the village board's role is, and, and I don't want us to just kind of tumble into this without really understanding how we're gonna work together on this project. Because my guess is that the village board doesn't wanna find itself in a position where the library board is fully in charge and has the authority to dis, to make decisions, even if you disagree with them. My guess is the library board wouldn't be very happy either if it was completely excluded from the decision-making process, and the village board was making all the decisions. And so, how do you go forward, especially with a statute that in my mind is a little unclear about what the roles are and when this line is crossed? And so, uh, Jeff suggested earlier that perhaps it'd be helpful to have a memorandum of understanding that kind of laid out, what, what is the process that we're gonna go through with respect to this project? And, and how the two boards are gonna work to move forward? And I think that, uh, there's real merit to that, I think, and, and agreement between the village board and the library board about how are we, I mean, even as to, with respect to the decision about, is that the right site for the library? And I, I, I hear what you're saying, that you feel that there's been a lot of momentum in, in, in a lot of reasons to come to the conclusion that that's the right site. Well, if the library, if the village board voted tonight to say, that's the site for the new library, I'm now asking myself, have we crossed the line? Is that now the library's, is the library now have exclus, and the language of the statute, uh, exclusive charge, control, and custody of the land? I don't want you to make that decision that that's the site without being aware that, you know, okay, that might have some legal consequences. So, in my mind, one of the things that should happen sooner rather than later is that the, the village board and the library board should together kind of design a process. What process do we wanna go, what are the decisions that need to be made along the way? What process are we gonna use to make those decisions? What role is each body gonna play in that process? Make sure you're both comfortable and on the same page. Yes, that makes sense to both bodies. And then, you've got that, once you've got that, uh, understanding agreed to between the two bodies, then I think you can go forward and start working your way through the decisions. Is that the right site? You know, how's it gonna be paid for? You know, three stories or two stories, you know, all, you know, who are we gonna hire as an architect? Uh, who's gonna be our civil engineer? There's gonna be a whole mess of decisions that need to be made. And, so in my mind, before, before you get too far down the road, it would be really helpful for both the parties to, to really have a clear understanding about how you're gonna, how you're gonna get through these decisions. That's also an opportunity, by the way, to factor into the process, you know, neighborhood input, public input, things of that nature. I mean, you can design that, you can, you know, you can design that into your process. We've been careful, for example, not to apply the impact fees yet towards the, uh, purchase of this property. Those bunnies essentially belong to the library board. I mean, they have the exclusive charge, control, and custody of that money. I mean, they get to decide how to spend that. We don't. If we spend that money on the, on this property, again, have we now crossed the line and created legal consequences? So, um, as I say, some communities stumble through this without mapping that out at the beginning, and sometimes they don't have a problem, and sometimes they do. Sometimes there are disagreements that arise between governing bodies and library boards and power struggles, and who gets to decide, and I just don't wanna end up there. So that's what I have to say.
Thanks, Matt. That was very helpful, I think, Lisa was to me, as far as going forward. Are there questions for Matt on that? Okay, so what more do you want tonight? You want agreement that, um, we wanna have that meeting, we said that? So now the library board goes forward to answer our questions?
Does the board wanna do that, I guess? I, I'm not sure I'm clear on that.
Okay. Do we want that information from the library board, and one, two, three, and four under eleven? Yes. Anybody who doesn't?
I do. My, my frustration isn't with the information being necessary, my frustration is with the order in which we're doing things. And we're making decisions before we even have an agreement as to what decisions we should be making, in my opinion. And, and what I'm saying is that we're eliminating options by making decisions. So we're three significant steps into this project, in my opinion, without having a memorandum of understanding that says whose roles and responsibility belong to who. So if we can flip this over, starting with a memorandum of understanding first, and then move into this material, I won't be frustrated anymore. Not that my frustration matters, but it'll unstuck me and get me back moving forward again. I'm gonna move forward either way. You get what I'm saying? Like, my, my frustration right now is, 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 is my issue, and I'll have to deal with it, but it comes down to the fact that we're making small subtle decisions that aren't necessarily being connected to one another, but ultimately are moving us in a direction that we haven't decided we wanna go yet, and tha, and that's frustrating to me. It's like, the current of the river is taking us along, and we haven't decided whether we wanna be in the water yet or not, is kinda how I'm feeling. So, Matt, if you can pull together an MOU that can define responsibilities and, and kind of give me some structure and guidance that I can plug data into to help me make my decisions as they come up in the future, then, then that would help me a lot.
Yeah, well, I think we can, we can work first at a staff level. I can work with, uh, Mike and Nikki, for example, to try and imagine, you know, what, what the, the various decision points are. We need to work our way through here. And then, um, we can kind of develop perhaps some options to take to both boards, the library board and the village board. Here, here are different ways that we might move forward together, uh, what each body's role would be in the process. And, and, because I think, I think both the library board and the village board are gonna need to, to be part of that conversation. And then, once we've done that at the staff level, we've got some options to consider, I think we can bring it back to both. That's where maybe a joint meeting might be helpful.
My only, my only point on, on all that, I'm not disagreeing at all, Jeff, because I think that's necessary. But what about if the village board doesn't agree with the library board as far as the size and the cost of the building? So we've, not to be difficult here, we've done all this work, and we can't agree on the size of the building.
Yeah, and, and I guess in my mind, that's gonna be one of those things, it's gonna be on, on, on the list of decisions that need to be made. And what the two bodies are gonna have to grapple with is, how are we gonna make, what, what, yeah, what will we do if the two bodies are in a different place with respect to that issue? And that's why I'd like to have an agreement before we get too far down the road about how that is gonna be resolved rather than later. Now, so that's my sense is, and, yeah, clearly, that's, and, and then Mike, if you feel like, hey, that's one of the decisions that should come earlier rather than later, that's fine.
I, I just think, and maybe I'm, I'm being the, uh, the, uh, the person worrying about something I shouldn't. I, I'm just worried about the financial side of this. That, uh, the impact, it's, I think Lisa and I have talked about this every other day, about how we're, how the village is gonna afford this without affecting everything else. So to me, that is a big issue.
And, and in my opinion, I think that wha, this, whatever agreement we put together between the two bodies is gonna have to recognize that to the extent there's a financial decision that involves, for example, the village board having to issue debt, for example, that ultimately the final word on that is gonna have to be the village board, in my mind. I mean, I, I don't expect the library board to disagree with that. I mean, I don't think that, that they're gonna expect to be in a position where they could dictate to the village board, you're gonna have to go out and borrow more money than you're willing to, like it or not. That's not, I don't think that's gonna be controversial. But I think that they would want, at least as part of the process, to have a voice in, you know, what the, what the level of funding should be. I, my guess is that the ultimate question of how much taxpayer money is gonna be spent on this is ultimately gonna have to be a village board decision.
Yep.
So a couple of things I thought about in the last few days about that. One, I think it's important that, that the library board and Nikki, uh, take some ownership for that tax levy too. It's not falling on us, we're elected officials, but, um, you know, to come with, with, um, everything and then be able to just say, you know, the village board didn't approve it, uh, because they felt it was too much, and it, but I think we have to realize both the groups that there's a tax impact on this. And how do we deal with that going forward, so we can actually make this work and, and not have that create a problem? And also, I wonder if it would help if we directed Mike to have, uh, Ellers run some scenarios of the impact on the, on taxes. If we're at eight million, or ten million, or eleven and a half million, so we have some facts that show us exactly where that is. Does that make sense or not?
Sure. I mean, we, we already have, Jim has some of that done already, but he'd have to refine it a little bit.
Yeah.
If the board wants us to do, we can be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think a recap of that might be good, if we're gonna have a discussion with the library board who might not have heard it. But the idea that we wanna stay under that fifty percent cap, because we don't wanna jeopardize our rating, um, but yet Mike recommends we borrow as much as we can for as long as we can, recognizing that we're probably gonna wind up refinancing when the, when the economy dips again at some future date, whether that's fifteen years or twenty years from now. I think there's gonna be a number that you're, that you're gonna be able to max out at bef, before you cross over that fifty percent barrier, Mike. And that's gonna be the real important number in the next couple of years, in terms of what projects do we prioritize. And, and I think, um, I mean, we each have a different passion when we talk about that. For some of us, it's roads. For me, it's infrastructure. I, I definitely prioritize library, senior center, even village hall. Roads are always gonna be an issue. They're always gonna be an issue. But we only need to get through a few years before the debt starts to fall off again, and we can take on more capacity.
That's a goo- good point. So this is something that Lisa did for me. She did a schedule of our debt, which includes, uh, the TIF debt, and that's actually ties in great to what we were talking about last night. Was, you know, when Scott and Dan were here from, from El, uh, from, sorry, from Badmills, excuse me. You know, the more we can do with TIF five, then that TIF five can give money to TIF three to help pay for the debt. That helps our entire debt levels, and it's important going forward. Yeah, so there, I mean, if we, if we could, you know, uh, wait to borrow for the library, it, it gives us more, uh, capacity. You're right, Jeff, as the debt falls off. So I think what I would wanna do with Jim is to, uh, look at a couple of scenarios and, and, and look at the timing of when would be the best time to borrow for the, the, the library.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'll do that.
Can we circle back a little bit? I just wanna see if I understand this process now. As I under, and I agree with a lot of the things that Jeff has indicated, and Mike, but I just wanna understand how we're gonna facilitate this. As I understand it, and as Mike has structured the agenda tonight, we're gonna ask for the items that Mike has recommended here.
Well, the board hasn't decided yet.
Well, no, no, but I mean, that's your recommendation, right?
I, I, I think that, um.
One through four, eleven, one.
Yep, and I, and I, it's, it's basically what I'm asking for here, and then Jeff is asking, we're asking.
Well, let me finish my thought. Okay, so. Get Mike's information, and then we come back with that information, and then we do the MOU. Is that?
What, what I was gonna say was that, um, was I, because Matt wasn't here last week, so I got a chance to talk to him about this. But I actually envisioned that, and I'm not expecting the library board to call special meetings and, you know, have weekly meetings. It takes them two months to get their information back to us, and they have to do that, they have to do it. At, at, at the time they're doing that, we're talking to the village attorney about the MOU and the consequences of chapter forty-three and things like that. So when the library board comes and gives us the, uh, the information, then the board and the library board can decide whether or not we wanna have a joint building committee, you know, those are all the things you can decide. And so I thought all the information would be on the table from the village attorney and from the library board, and, and there, to me, that's the starting point of. And then also, as Steve's asking something from Jim, Matt, we have all the information on the table, and to me, that's the starting point to decide, you know, where we're going with the library. The, the village board, hopefully by that time, would know and would have made a decision on what you're comfortable as far as the library board's involvement and control of the property and things like that. Library board will have their input on what they want as far as the size of the library, and, and we can decide how to coordinate that. That's, I mean, that's just my opinion, I'm not saying that's the right way of doing it.
How does that sound to you, Nikki?
Um, I think that that sounds very good. I, I look forward to working with them, um, with staff and attorney. And, um, we can also get information together at the same time.
Okay. Any questions or comments over here? And I think that gets you where you'd like to be, right, Jeff? Not as quick as you wanted, but I think that, if I heard you right, that pulls things together for what you were asking for and gets them at the same point in time.
Because it puts, it puts us in the same room when we have an MOU and we have feedback from the library to think through. Yeah, that makes sense. And the sticky stuff for you is you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to make a decision on, uh, chapter forty-three. And you're gonna have to interpret that and.
Where we cross the line?
Yeah.
Well, wha, what I would prefer to do is approach us in a way that doesn't require us to take a risk on are we making the right call about where we cross the line? So in other words, we have an agreement between the village board and the library board about how we're gonna move forward before we take a, a step that is. about how we're gonna move forward before we take a, a step that is clear, that, that could be crossing the line. And then we know, when we take this step, we're doing it together, and we're doing it in a way that we've agreed to. And so I don't think we're gonna, that way I can avoid having to make a judgment call that might be right and might be wrong.
Okay. Are we at the same point then, we're all okay with where we are?
Yeah.
Jenna?
Yeah.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
So are we ready for item twelve?
We are.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A posse? Most in various, thank you. Thanks, everyone, good discussion.